Sylvania Board of Education. Adam, can you call the roll?
Ms. Huffman?
Here.
Mrs. Conklin?
Here.
Mrs. Lavalette?
Here.
Mr. Feller?
Here.
Mrs. Johnson?
Here.
Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Dr. Motley, I think we are with you.
Our microphone here, if you don't mind. Good evening and welcome to, a little closer here, and welcome to the board meeting this evening. It's my pleasure to provide my superintendent's report. There have been a lot of activities going on throughout the district in the past couple of weeks, and I want to highlight just a few. One, we continue with our Master Facilities Plan and our Master Facilities Committee work. Actually, this week, I believe it's tomorrow, we have the third leg of our subcommittee, which is-
Wednesday.
Wednesday, Wednesday, of our subcommittee around fiscal planning for some of the ideas and concepts that are coming forth from our work from our Master Facilities Plan. We did, in working through the process, also took a sidestep and also developed a plan where we thought the idea that came out forefront and as a priority for our district to focus on students with special needs, special education students, in addition to focusing on a preschool. And because those students also have special needs, we've added a fourth subcommittee that will focus on that work, and they will be meeting next week. So our role and our plan to move forward with looking at the footprint of what Sylvania schools will look like over the next five, 10, 15, 25 years is well underway. And I would like to thank our Board of Education members who have taken an active role in the process, as well as many educators and community members and parents. In addition, last, week before last, I had the pleasure of seeing Fame at Southview, the musical. It was fantastic. And coming up actually this week, we have from our T-Pac performance, we're going to have, hmm, Beth and Hamlet. Don't know what that's going to be like, but the title alone is intriguing. Still more, can't hear me? Okay, we're going to go right here. Is that better? Should I start over? No, you don't want me to do that. Why did all the heads go like this? That's funny. At any rate, I also had the pleasure of, actually today, this is award season, not only for our academics, but for our performing arts, and not unlike tonight, we have so many commendations to offer. But I had the opportunity today to go visit Southview's art show, and I'm going later on this week to see Northview's art show. And Dr. Vence, I have to tell you, and Mr. Pew, the ones that I wanted to choose for the superintendent's choice, you had already selected them, so I had to go with my number two. So great minds think alike. I like it.
I had to make sure it was not the question of the board.
I appreciate it. I know, I have done that a lot to you, but I have to tell you, it is such a hard decision. There are hundreds of pieces of art on display from our students. Our Wildcats and our Cougars are so incredibly talented, from charcoal to graphite to watercolors to pottery to 3D, just all these concepts that they develop and come out of their souls and their spirits. It's just incredible what our art educators are able to draw and help cultivate with our students. So it's a tough job every year, but boy, the experience is just amazing. I'm always thoroughly impressed by our students and our art program. And again, this week, we have lots of track meets, lots of baseball games, I don't know, softball, right now, the way I'm hearing the rain, we don't know if we'll get it all in. I saw lacrosse folks running to their cars when I was pulling in tonight. But lots of activities, so if you have a chance, please come out and support our students. You'll see me out there this week with some of our student athletes and an orchestra concert, I believe, this week as well. So that's my superintendent's report.
Thank you. And we have commendations this evening?
Yes, ma'am, we do. We have a number of commendations. The board would like to recognize several, but I'm going to start with, we have several commendations listed for students from Northview, as well as, I believe, Southview in regards to ACT scores above a score of 26. We have several listed, and we have several other students that will be acknowledged tonight. So we are going to recommend that our students kind of sit tight. Ms. Lavalette and I are going to come down to the podium and recognize the individuals that are here this evening for their Board of Education commendation, and then we will do a vote after we present the awards, if that's okay. All right. He's a little wet. All right, this is always so exciting. It's such a great opportunity for our board to really recognize the best of the best in our school district for a variety of activities, albeit sports, athletics, academics, the arts. It just makes me so proud to lead this district because we have excellence before us. Tonight, we are going to start with commendations for the Northview High School esports team. When I call your name, I would like to welcome you up to the podium here, where you will receive a certificate from our board president, Ms. Tammy Lavalette. In addition, we will give you an opportunity to stay here, so your parents can take a picture, and your coaches can take a picture, probably your principals, whoever wants to take a picture. And then at the end, we will do a group photo as well. So we are going to begin with our esports team. They are hereby commended by the Sylvania Board of Education for the 2024 Esports State Champions in Super Smash Brothers. And a little story, folks, for those of you who are here in person, as well as those who may watch this later. Four years ago, esports was relatively new, relatively new. And it is absolutely amazing that in just four years, that we have a group of folks, a group of students who have gone to state twice. Last year, they were at state at the University of Akron. This year, they went back and they clinched the state championship. So it says something special again about our students and our parents and our coaches here in Sylvania. And I also know we had another student, I believe, my first year here, 2021 under COVID, who graduated last year, and I think it's important for folks to know, he, I believe, received a full ride to the University of Maryland, I believe, four-year scholarship for esports. So for those of you who are in the audience that didn't know, yes, your children can go to college playing video games and make a good buck after college. There's so many jobs and so many careers that are around esports. So if you don't know much about it, start Googling what esports can be and do for your child. So first, I would like to recognize Amos Hassel. I would like to also recognize Asher Hassel. I would like to recognize Gavin Mack. I would like to recognize Jamison Prus. And Kayden Shirk. And where's the coach? Come on up here, coach. We have a certificate for you. I remember meeting you a couple of years ago. This is fantastic. Thank you so much. All right, we need a group pic. Team. We hereby commend by the Board, Sylvania Board of Education, for winning the NLL Cardinal Division Championship. Congratulations to these Cougars. So I believe we have a few folks who may have walked in, so I'm just going to call names. We have some folks who may be here but decided to pop in because the rain came and they could make the meeting tonight. So we would like to begin with Micah Bays. Zach Carter. Brandon Ingram. Adam Lapla. Jonathan March. Dylan Morrow. Avery Offenberg. Max Powers. Trent Riggs. Parker Sears. Jaren Witcher. And Joey Zorbust. Parker Sears. All righty. Did we miss anybody? Did we grab everyone? All the players? All right, here we go.
I don't know the coaches, it's the Coach of the Year, too.
So we're going to make a special announcement. These two gentlemen are here. We have Dennis Springs, who is commended as the Sylvania Board Member, he is commended by the Sylvania Board of Education for being selected as the NLL Coach of the Year, Cardinal Division.
Do we previously, or is it on this one? It's already up. The class is in the library. And the case is principal. It's like right in the atrium outside. No, we had to reason, we had to pay a down payment, and I had to add more money, add more appropriations in, but it was at the end of the month, so I had to leave it, because we were already working. So it's all technicality, but it was kind of, because-
We're not paying for it.
No, general fund, no. So.
Oh, thank you. Where is it? Somewhere in the building?
Outside, right when you walk, right when you kind of enter the main entrance. It's on like a pedestal. It looks kind of cool, it's made out of metal.
Thank you.
Northview's doing something to-
And now a, an award, a commendation that speaks to legacy and being an icon here in the Sylvania schools. This award goes to a very special coach, who again is legendary in the Sylvania community, who's gone above and beyond, not only as an educator in our district for over 30 years, but a parent, community member, resident, and someone who took our team to state, which is always a tough road, but once you bring a group of young men together to make a difference, they become a family and they change the fabric of your community. It is, without further ado, that I, as superintendent, have the pleasure to recognize Coach Jim Mazzies, who is commended by the Sylvania Board of Education for the Southview High School football field being named in his honor as Mercy Health Jim Mazzies Football Field. Congratulations, Coach.
We have a special certificate. Did you want to say a few words, or are you okay? It's either one.
You know what I'm going to say?
Yes.
Surprised, honored, humbled, amazed. I thought you had to be dead for something like this. Thank you.
Hope you guys notice, he has two rings on his fingers, by the way. Two rings.
Can we get a couple of people up here? Can we get a couple of people? Dave Spies, can you come up here? I'd like some people to come up here. Come on, Dave. Come on, Dave. We took some other good ones, buddy. We took some other good ones. Come on, Dave. Come on, Dave, this picture. That's my dog. Come on, come on, come on.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Tim, you're such a photo bomber.
I know everybody had to say yes, so thank you. I know everybody had to vote. Appreciate it. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
Okay. And we have, oh, one more, after this one. That's okay. Oh, there we go.
I think the room should exit, actually. I don't think anyone's here.
She usually gives her mouth.
And we have one final recognition. We didn't forget about our Cougar NLL Player of the Year, Micah Bays. Congratulations to Micah Bays, NLL Athlete of the Year. No worries. It's that time of year, we understand. So, Ms. Lavalette, I think we need to go up and do a board motion. Ms. Lavalette, I would like to recommend commendations and recognition of achievement, item 3.1 on our board agenda, as noted.
I recommend for approval, item 3.1.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions?
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Huge.
Adam, please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, we are now at the portion of our agenda for public participation for items that are on the agenda.
Are you going to make the announcement?
No.
They're not leaving?
No.
And make the announcement, but they can leave if they-
Oh, yeah. I think they figured it out.
I think they got them.
Amy's dismissing them. Ms. Eddington, thank you for letting our audience members know that they aren't required to stay just because they were recognized.
Not welcome to.
They are more than welcome to stay.
Look, we got the grandchild, the great-grandchild.
That's nice.
That was very nice. He's moved.
So no public- We're now on item 5.1. The Sylvania City School District Board of Education will be considering the reemployment of the following licensed certified teachers, Michael Zernikowski, Sarah Nowicki, Mark Jump, and Sue Crandall as superannuates to the same position from which they previously retired. We're welcoming public comment at this time. Okay, we don't seem to have public comment, so we will move on to the treasurer.
All right, I'll do mine in consent, but first I'll give you a quick update. I'll present in May, at the second board meeting in May, an updated forecast, but as you can see in my update for the month, we're trending in the right direction, we're spot on to what we forecasted in May. Few things changed, dove into some property taxes and how potential reevaluation will impact state funding, but I'll update you guys about that in May for future years. So 6.1 minutes from March 18th, April 2nd, and April 15th. 6.2 is the treasures report. We just have one item on 6.3 availability of funds, and 6.4 appropriation and revenue changes. Just fine tune in some appropriations for various funds there. And then 6.5 is our annual Lucas County rate resolution that I have to submit to the county by May 1st. And then we have one cell phone stipend that I missed a couple months ago for a new maintenance employee.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, item 6.1 through 6.6.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? Please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Dr. Motley?
Thank you. I would like to recommend item 7.1. We proudly accept two donations this evening, one being a donation of nail supplies and products valued at $250 from Camelot Salon to the Northview Cosmetology Program, which rocks. I've been there, it's awesome. And also a donation of $500 for the Sylvania Bus Rodeo Competition from Cardinal Bus Sales and Service Incorporated.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Comments or questions?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Greatly appreciated.
Adam, please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Thank you. It is my pleasure and a privilege to recommend item 7.2, the appointment of Ms. Brittany Robbins to the Principal of Maplewood Elementary for a two-year term, starting this August 1st, 2024, through July 2026. For those of you who may not be aware, Brittany has served as an elementary assistant principal for the past two years, serving at both Hillview Elementary and Maplewood Elementary. And in fact, jumped in John Duvie's shoes at the beginning of the school year, because John retired and had a time away that he was not allowed to actually hold the office of principal. And so Brittany jumped in and started the school year off without any issues. It was very comforting for a family to see a familiar face. It was seamless. So thank you, Brittany, for your dedication and service to our students, and I recommend Brittany, Brittany's contract for approval.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? Adam, please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Yay, welcome, congratulations. Yay.
I just want to appreciate and just thank you, the board, and Dr. Motley, for this opportunity and the board working with you guys. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. We look forward to it also.
We do. We look forward to working with you, Brittany. So Tim's going to call you tomorrow, and then I'm going to call you right after Tim, then Adam's going to call you right after that now, but we're ready, we're ready. And then Julie, we're just going to, all going to call you. Jill's going to jump in, we're all going to call you. It'll be great. Moving on, we would like, I would like to recommend item 7.3. This is a memorandum of understanding with our OPEC bargaining unit, which is our local support staff union, and that is a MOU as noted, for a language change.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? Adam, please call the roll.
Julie?
Yes.
Greg?
Yes.
Tammy?
Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Kim?
Yep.
Thank you. I would like to recommend item 7.4, which is a new contract from, between Sylvania Schools and the Tangible Habits LLC for consulting services for the upcoming school year.
I'll move approval. I'll second.
Comments or questions?
Tell us a little bit about this.
Certainly.
Yeah.
I think we can all chime in. We have worked with a consultant company for the past two years, using Esther funds to employ a BCBA. This is a behavior specialist who goes into classrooms and works with children with moderate to intense needs, more specifically behavioral in nature, to provide recommendations to the team in order for the child to experience success in the classroom. She works with our teachers, she works with paraprofessionals to give consulting ideas in regards to how to best meet the needs of some of these students, in that they have some very extreme emotional challenges. The good news is, I do believe that the contract where we were with another company, and we did check, she does not have a non-compete clause. We will keep the same employee. She has decided to go out on her own and start her own business, so we are consulting with her to keep continuity of services.
Because this name seems familiar.
Actually, it's a new company for her.
It's a new company for her.
But the name is the same, correct. She ventured out on her own, she's been entrepreneurial, so we'll have the continuity of service, and the contract was equal to, up to the same amount that it was last year, so it's not any extra cost for her to, for us to retain her services.
Thank you.
Certainly.
Is this now paid out of the general fund?
Yeah, it will be.
Will IDEA also cover some of that? Adam, do you know?
Uh, no, not for this.
No, okay.
Okay, Adam, can you call the roll?
Julie.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Tammy.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Thank you. I recommend item 7.5 for approval. These are policies that are for a second read and approval, as noted.
I'll move approval.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? So are we still working on a policy for crowdfunding?
Yes, ma'am.
Adam, can you call the roll?
Julie.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Tammy.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Tiberzki?
Thank you. I am recommending items 8.1 through 8.6 on a consent agenda basis. 8.1 is licensed substitute. 8.2 is licensed extra duty. 8.3 is a licensed increase in position for next year. Jason Kayler will be picking up those horticulture sections to get our seniors through those career tech programs. 8.4 are licensed contract non-renewals. Some of those are retire, rehires coming off the MOU, some of those are one-year positions, some of those are just at the end of their contract that we're non-renewing. 8.5 are our licensed contract recommendations moving forward for the 24-25 school year. 8.6 is a licensed stipend that is based on the science of reading in House Bill 33. Those are the recommendations.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 8.1 through 8.6.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions? Adam, please call the roll.
Julie.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Tammy.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Just, just note, we will get reimbursed from the state for all of the costs for the, for the science of reading stipends, so.
Thank you. I will recommend items 9.1 through 9.5 on a consent agenda basis. 9.1 are our classified contract recommendations. 9.2 are classified new hires. 9.3, classified personnel change. 9.4, classified resignations. And 9.5 is a classified stipend based on the bus rodeo.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 9.1 through 9.5.
I'll second.
Any comments or questions?
Now, we have two employees named Christina Als.
One employee doing two jobs.
Oh, okay.
We just had the board approve around the other side to pay her credit.
Got it, okay. I thought that was quite a coincidence.
Yeah. It's her.
Julie.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Tammy.
Yes.
Thank you. I will recommend items 10.1 through 10.3 on a consent agenda basis. 10.1 are stipends for the 23-24 school year. Those are our career tech program and chapter advisors. 10.2 is an athletic volunteer for the 24-25 school year. That's for next year for volleyball, they'll do summer work. And 10.3 is an athletic volunteer for the 23-24 school year. That's this year for baseball.
I'll move approval on a consent agenda basis, items 10.1 through 10.3.
I'll second.
Comments or questions? Adam, can you please call the roll?
Julie.
Yes.
Greg.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Tammy.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're on board reports. Greg, do you have anything to report?
Um, just a few meetings I've been to, Sage Art Rec, I think CIC meeting, but there was really nothing of note to report from any of this one.
Okay, Julie.
Uh, Sylvania Prevention Alliance is working on a new fundraiser, do it away at the annual ball family, and it might be pickleball for prevention. Yeah, it's a new thing, so, working on that.
It's got the alliteration going on.
Right. They talk about, you'll probably do that, uh, doing lead instead of dare.
Yes.
They've talked to us a lot about that, was interesting. And I did get to go see Fame, uh, which was fantastic, but an interesting part of that is because it's mental health issues and Fame, they let Sylvania Prevention Alliance have a table there, and they donated part of their ticket sales to SPA in support of mental health, so that was pretty nice.
It's a great partnership right there.
Yeah, that was pretty nice.
That's a win-win.
That's all I have.
Jill? Um, since our last meeting, I attended the Master Facility Plan Subcommittee meeting, also attended Social Emotional Health Strategic Planning Committee piece of that, and our Assistant Superintendent, Tim, is going to give a presentation at some point, correct?
We all will probably do. Strategic plan update, yep.
So I will let him do all the, all the hard work. And then SCS, I've been over there a lot lately, Sophia Lloyd, I don't know if I mentioned this before, I don't think I did, because I don't think it was public at that point, but Sophia Lloyd has chosen to go on another life journey, something she's wanted to do all of her life and has now had an opportunity to do it. Uh, I was asked to be on the search committee, and we have been interviewing, we are down to two finalists at this point, and those two individuals will meet before the entire SCS board at an emergency meeting tomorrow evening, and hopefully after that meeting, we will have our new executive director, executive director for SCS. Also, we are proceeding with our program committee ideas, along with some of the other subcommittees that we have formed, and I think that's it. Yep.
Thank you. Kim?
Um, the only thing, the communications, we've got the, the district digest coming out, um, we have SSPO on Friday, we have not met for a month, so we should have more to report on that, but that should.
They actually, sorry to interrupt you, they said it the last meeting in April, unless you've been told differently, but they said that was the last meeting in the year.
Oh, okay, so we're not meeting.
Oh, I think their next meeting is going to be a planning meeting. They said it their last meeting.
Oh, okay. So then I won't have that to worry about. No, I'm glad you did, because I would have showed up there. Just got in there. That's all I have.
Okay. And I attended foundation meetings and actually the April SSPO meeting, where they had a nice presentation on, from parents on the different, how to transition from a parent perspective to the different school grade levels, like elementary versus junior high versus high school. I thought it was a really nice presentation. Okay, we are now at the portion of our agenda for public participation for items that are not on the agenda. And seeing none, I will move that we go into executive session for purposes of consideration of the employment of a public employee, and we will not take action after the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Can you call the roll?
Yeah. Tammy.
Yes.
Julie.
Yes.
Uh, Greg.
Yes.
Jill.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.